Okay, just a bit of mobilisation before we start punching the pads. So shoulders forwards and backwards. Thanks for logging on to our padwork session this Friday. It's very kind of you to log on and join us for padwork. Hands on your shoulders, forwards. Backwards. Now, those of you that are taking the grading, not Tigers, not Tigers, those of you that are taking the grading, make sure you've got one more week to fill in your form for the grading, one week to go for the grading. Backwards. One forwards, one backwards. Change. Hands on your hips, circle your hips round. Change. Change again. Feet together, hands on your knees, circle your knees round. Lifting your knees. Bit faster, bit higher. Out to the side. Inwards. Okay, shaking your legs off. Okay, pad holder, grab hold of the pads. Okay, can everybody see the clock? Can you see we've got a new clock? Can everyone see the time on the clock? Thumbs up if you, or is it too small? Too small? Yeah? Okay, let's just try and move it a bit closer. Okay, is that better? Okay, cool. So we've got 50 seconds on the clock. Okay, so all we're gonna do is four punches, duck, four punches, duck, four punches, duck. Okay? Now, if there's two of you, we're gonna do two rounds. So one does it the first round, one does it second round. Okay, are you ready? Four punches and duck. I don't need my watch now. Okay. You'll know when the alarm goes off. Are you ready? Let's go! Yay, it stopped there! It goes off each time. Press reset. Okay. Okay, swap the pads over. Do they want to hear the alarm go off? Good. All right. You go this side this time, mate. Good luck on this one. I do. Are you ready? 50 seconds. Let's go! That's good. Keep it going, that's good. Five to go. Hey, stop there! All right, calm down. Okay, swap the pads over. Okay, so this time, we're going to do 10 punches and one squat thrust. So after 10 punches, one squat thrust. Are you ready? Ready, 50 seconds. Let's go! Keep going! Again, try again, keep going. That's it, keep it going, that's good. 10 left. Okay, stop there! If I can change that alarm, maybe make it a shorter beat.
And a quieter one.
Yeah. Swap the pads over, round two.
I was sitting next to that.
Ready? Let's go! Oh, backwards, yeah, sorry. Yeah. Fifteen to go. That's good, that's good, keep going. Three left. Swap over, grab a drink if you need a drink. Well done, everyone, well done. Swap over. Okay, now we're gonna try and work on our speed. So we're gonna do two punches, sir. So we'll do two punches, two kicks, two punches, two kicks. We're gonna try and do as many as we can in the 50 seconds. So speed, speed, speed. Two punches, two kicks, two punches, two kicks. Fast as you can. So we're going from here to here, pushing here, over to here. Are you ready? Let's go. Go! Faster! We're avoiding the alarm, right? Faster, faster! That's good. Fifteen! Hey, stop there! Swap the pads over. Round two. Round two. Quick as you can now. Speed it up if you're doing it again. Fast as you can now. Ready? You ready, Mum? Let's go! Twenty left. Faster, faster! Okay, stop there, stop there. Okay, swap the pads over. Okay, so next one we're gonna do, the next 15, it's not on our syllabus. Okay, it's just a self-defence technique. Okay, so just gonna hold the pads slightly higher than normal. You've got to jump with a knee strike. Okay, so you're jumping knee. Okay, so you lift the other knee and then knee with that one. Okay, so lift this one, then knee with the other. That's it. And then, and then you do the other way around. So, yeah, so we're going up, knee. So, up, knee. Okay? Give it a go. Okay, don't worry about perfecting the technique today. Okay, just a bit of fun for today, something a little bit different. So you lift one knee, knee with the other one. Okay? Like a scissor kick. Okay? 50 seconds, change knees each time. Ready? If you can't do it, just do a normal knee strike. Okay? If you can't master the jumping knee technique. Ready? 50 seconds. Let's go! Yeah? That's it, good. Hey, stop there! Very good. Swap pads over. So if you can't do the jump, just do a knee strike. Okay, are you ready? 50 seconds, round two. Ready, here we go. Let's go! 20 seconds.
I just wanna do a jumping punch.
Okay, stop there! Swap the pads over. Okay, so, so the equivalent of the knee but on the arm, we're doing an elbow strike now. So if I put the pad out like this, you're gonna elbow with the right hand. So the right arm just force and just turn the body, attacking with the elbow. So the elbow attacks the pad here like this. Okay, so if I were facing you and you were doing the elbow, I would hold the pad straight like this. Okay, so the elbow comes around here like this. The faster you can rotate the body, the more power in the elbow strike. So just changing one side to the other. Now, what you wanna try and avoid when you do an elbow strike is reaching. If you reach too far forwards, that takes all the power out of the elbow. You wanna get close and then rotate fast. But as soon as you reach, a lot of the power goes from the elbow. Okay, so don't reach, just swing round with it close to your body. Okay, so do one side then the other. Take your time over it. Ready, 50 seconds. Let's go! Fifteen to go. Okay, stop there! Other side, other person. Swap over. Elbow strike. Ready? So if the parents are elbow striking their children, please be careful you don't hit them because you could kill them. Okay. Ready? 50 seconds. Let's go! It's practice. Okay. Stop there. Swap over again. Very good, grab a drink if you need a drink. Okay. Now, Tigers, you're doing something different to the Taekwondo this time. So Tigers, you're gonna do double turning kick. So you kick twice, one, two, then one, two on the other side. Okay, so you just keep changing from one side to the other, Tigers. Okay, Taekwondo, we're doing turning kick followed by reverse turning kick. So we're gonna turn and kick, reverse turning kick, and then the other side, turning kick, reverse turning kick. Okay? All right, Tigers, if you've done reverse turning kick before and you wanna have a go at doing that instead, you can. Okay, it's up to you. Are you ready? 50 seconds. Reset. Ready, Mum? Let's go! See you, kid. 20 seconds to go. That's good. One. Hey, swap over! Round two, ready? Round two. You all right, Josh? Okay, so remember, if you're doing turn and kick, reverse turn and kick, they're both on the same side here. So you do one and then two for a higher one. Are you ready? 50 seconds. Let's go! Fifteen! Swap over! Well done! Okay. So Tigers, this time you're doing two kicks with a skip like this. You do one, two. Okay, remember when one foot, one foot takes off, before that lands again, the other one takes off to do the second kick. So at one stage, you've got both feet in the air at one time, that's it. You've got it, Fraser, you've got it. Okay, so two turning kicks with a skip. Okay, everybody else, we're doing back kick, back kick. So it's like this, you make the pads like this and kick in between, obviously the two pads here. So a back kick, when you turn into a back kick, you're almost kicking straight behind you like a donkey would kick. Okay, so back kick or two turning kicks with a skip. Ready? Let's go! And react to the pad. Soon as you see the pad kick. It's not started, Grace. Got an extra long session this time because Grace forgot to start the timer. No problem. Okay, stop there, I think we've done enough. Swap the pads over. It's normally me that forgets to start the timer, so it's nicer when someone else does it. Okay, round two, are you ready? Round two. Oh, Mrs, Mrs Smith. Try and hold on to the thick parts of the pad so they don't fall off. That's it, you've got it. Awesome. Are you ready? 50 seconds. Ready? Ready? Let's go! Good. Awesome. Trying to kick me in the face.
How did you know?
Ten left! Hey, stop there, stop there! We've got time for one more, one more set. Okay, so we're gonna end on what we normally end with. So it's any technique, any technique. So this would be just a single punch, this would be two punches. These are turning kicks, we've got axe kicks here, we've got side kicks out to the side, reverse turning kicks. So if you put two pads together like this, it's two kicks with a skip. Okay, so it's up to you. Put them in any, any order you like. Try and make your partner work as hard as possible for the next 50 seconds. Ready? Ready? Ready, Mum? Go! Two turning kicks with a skip. Sit, turn. Right, right. Reverse. Three sixty. Sixty. Upper leg, reverse. Elbow. Two turning kicks with a skip, and again. Three turning kicks with a skip. No, also. Back kick. Two punches, and again. Two turning kicks with a skip, and again. Stop there! Very good, well done. Great pad holding, everyone. Swap the pads over. Now, if the person, the person is doing it for the second time, try and make them work even faster for the second set. Okay, are you ready? Okay, hope it's going well, Anastasia and Kit. I can't see, but I hope it's going well. Okay, last one then. Ready, 50 seconds. Ready, sir? Ready, Mum? Go! Two punches. Four punches. Two turning kicks with a skip. With a skip. Go, go, go! Reverse turning kick. You're meant to have fun, you know? Reverse turning kick. Two turning kicks with a skip. Two punches. Four punches. Right. Reverse! Reverse. No more side. Upper leg. Up there! Well done, guys, well done. Put the pads away. Thank you, pad holders, you were awesome. Much better than last week, much better. Grace didn't realise we had to duck, so my bad. Okay, well done, everyone. Legs out wide. Just scratching those legs out wide. Put your hands down. Go a little bit wider. Make sure you've got plenty of room. Okay, gently lower yourself to the ground. Bring your feet in. Push your knees out to the side. Okay, thanks for being in our Friday gang for padwork. It's very good to see you all. Thanks, thanks for joining us. Thanks, thanks for joining in. This padwork session will be available on YouTube from tomorrow. So if you want to relive this session all over again, okay, just go to our YouTube channel. There's a link on our website and also you can find it just by typing in TSA Taekwondo into YouTube. Okay, everybody, stand up. Taking your legs off. Jarrett? Konye? Well done, guys, well done, very good, very good.